Come to order. Please, let me remind you that Board Member Worsley will be joining us virtually. And Board Member Johnson is absent for the meeting. To honor social distancing related to the coronavirus pandemic, the public may attend the meeting per capacity of 25. In-person attendance will be on a first-come basis. The public, however, may view the board meeting with the Edgecombe County Public Schools YouTube as presented. Please join me as we pledge allegiance to the flag. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. May be seated. Good evening, members of the board, ladies and gentlemen. We welcome you to our meeting. I'd like to take a personal point of privilege and ask you at this time, you'll remain seated as we give a silent moment to those persons in Kentucky and the other states who are suffering because of the hurricane tornado disasters. Please give them a moment of silence if you will. Thank you. Item number two. Dr. Bridges, if you look at the... Well, the agenda has been presented. Are there any corrections or deletions?
So I do have two amendments. If we could add 9.1.2 extracurricular activities for winter sports and then move item 8.5. B to 6. A as an item for information.
8.5. B.
To 6.8. Thank you.
Okay. Are there any other corrections or movements or deletions? Hearing none, do we hear a motion to accept the agenda as amended?
Evelyn Wilson. All for motion that we approve our agenda for December 13, 2021 as amended. Second.
It has been motioned second for the approval of the agenda as amended for December 13, 2021. You've heard that motion and second. Are there any further discussion or are there any further questions? Hearing none, I call the question. Those in favor, let it be known by stating your name, saying aye.
Evelyn Wilson, aye.
Marva Scott, aye.
Wee Malice, aye.
Ann Kent, aye.
Lily Worsley, aye.
And that motion passed unanimously. We move to 3.1, recognitions. Dr. Bridges, if you'll join me, please, at the front. Members of the board, if you'll stand with me, please. It is no secret that this Edgecombe County Public Schools and its superintendent is the best-kept secret in the United States of the world. And we don't have to say that because the state of North Carolina has proven that by recognizing a few weeks ago and naming Dr. Valerie H. Bridges as the A. Craig Phillips North Carolina Superintendent of the Year. And so, behalf of your board and your school system, this is just a token of saying, every time you look at this, you know how important you are to us. Bless you and congratulations. And while they're coming, let me say to the public that on Wednesday of this week at 5 o'clock at the Edgecombe Community College's atrium or atrium, we're going to recognize Dr. Bridges in a floating reception. 20 years from now, you can say, who are those men? Thank you.
Thank you so much. I want to share with you all, the last time I was at a superintendent's meeting, they gave me a check. The check was not for me this time. Edgecombe County is from mostly architects and it's for $2,000. And I'll turn this in to Ms. Larry, but I also wanted you all to be aware.
Thank you.
They're paying us to be great. Thank you.
All right, item number 3.2, Employee of the Month.
Good evening, Board Chair, Madam Vice Chair, Members of the Board, Superintendent Dr. Bridges. I am excited to introduce the December ECPS Employee of the Month. Kevin Roberts is the ECPS Digital Teaching and Learning Specialist. According to Technology Director Joseph Hayes, Mr. Roberts has gone above and beyond since the beginning of the school year, serving the majority of the time as the district's only DTNL. During this time, he has had to wear many hats, but always has a calm, reassuring demeanor and a smile on his face. Mr. Roberts serves as the Support Administrator for district platforms, including Schoolology, Mastery Connect, and Clever, and can be seen daily co-teaching classes across the district. All of his instructional endeavors help to increase student engagement and content mastery. He is currently demonstrating and growing his leadership skills so he can better serve the ECPS staff and students. He is participating in the Emerging Leaders Program where he is learning the core skills necessary to think strategically, build effective teams, and lead successfully with equity and inclusion in mind. He is also currently participating in the NC Rethink Ed Program where he is being trained to serve as a blended learning district coach. He is truly an asset to the district and we congratulate him on being selected as the December ECPS Employee of the Month.
Congratulations.
Congratulations, sir. We move now to item four, public comment. I have the sheet and there are no sign-ups. So we move now to item number five, the approval of the open session minutes, November 8, 2021. Having received those and having had a chance to look at them and corrode them to see if there are any corrections, do we hear any corrections or additions to those minutes? Hearing none, do we have a motion to accept them, Mr. President?
Mr. Chair, Marva Scott. Motion to approve the November 8, 2021, open minutes.
Evelyn Wilson, second to vote.
You've heard the motion, the second for the approval of the open session minutes, November 8, 2021. Any further discussion? Hearing none, those in favor, let it be known by stating your name, saying aye.
Evelyn Wilson, aye.
Marva Scott, aye.
Wee Malice, aye.
Ann Kent, aye.
Lily Worsley, aye.
And that motion passed unanimously. Item number 6.1.
You have a packet that you received as part of a few things and I just want to go over these with you. So the first one is a color sheet that tells you about Spirit Week. So you all may not be with us, but just please know that if you see... I know you saw Ms. Pittman. You saw her socks. That it is Spirit Week and we just want to have a little bit of fun. So please don't think that we are doing things we shouldn't be doing. We're just enjoying the holiday spirit. And then you also see the update and it's a little bit longer than usual this time, but we had a lot of things that we wanted to celebrate. So the first thing with the updates, you see the Spring Scholar Teacher Campaign. And you all know that that has been an endeavor that Matt Smith, Susan Hoak, and Erin Swanson have really been digging into to make sure that we have the funding that's needed for our students as they come back to work with us, but as they are scholar teachers. So a couple bullets there, just want to kind of go over those. So in place of doing the Spring Relay for Life, we'd like to have a campaign for our district that would start in early January and that would support our scholar teacher program. You have a handout that shows you, but behind everything, it shows you all of our scholar teachers that are kind of in the hopper and where they're moving along. It shows you that most of these scholar teachers have been funded, but we don't want to have a situation where we can't support them as what we have shared with their families and with them. And so, we know that we need to keep moving along because we don't have this big pot of money. And so, this would support, have us supporting our scholar teachers. So that campaign, again, there's a payroll deduction. And if you follow along with the packet that's behind it, there's a one-pager, ask for information, give some amounts and choices for you to make deductions monthly, but you also can do a one-time payment if you prefer to do that. And if you want it to be anonymous, you can do that as well. So there's a one-pager that is on top of those student information. So again, we are looking at, if you look at that third bullet, we are at the point where the class of 2024, that we want to make sure that we're creating some funding streams to support those students. We do have coverage for the classes of 22 and 23 and that, again, is due to hard work. And if you look at the handout, it will note to you what's been covered and what is not. And we want to, again, make sure we don't leave any of our students out so that they are fully funded and can return to ECPS to teach. We are at the point of where we have some graduates from college that are coming out for May of '22. It states their name, tells you what school they're coming from. They have, two of them, two of the three, I think, have passed the praxis. And then the third student is taking the praxis later this month. So that is great news. Speaks to their training and support that they've had, not just in Edgecombe, but also in their higher ed courses. We are, again, continuing to network. So you see Mr. Al Austin from Corning. He's continuing to support us. We have other hoppers, things in the hopper for support. I haven't listed those, but we do have some other things that we're working on. And something as small as $5 a month donation from our employees makes a huge difference. We've done the math on that and $5 would go a long way for our students. So it's just a small amount would be a big deal for our kids and for this program. And then, last bullet, if there are schools that still want to do Relay for Life, they certainly can do that and we encourage them to do that. We wanted to make sure that we put our scholar teachers as part of our fundraising in support of our students and the program. So I'll stop there, see if you have any questions. You see the names. Mr. Smith and Susan have provided pictures for those students along with names and showing what funding source is supporting those students along with the one-pager that will show what that will look like as we are collecting funds. So again, I'll stop there, see if there are any questions.
Questions?
I'd just like to make the comment and say, I hope our employees take this seriously. I encourage them to help. I mean, $5 a month is nothing in the whole scheme of life. Get a cup of coffee somewhere. But it could change one of our students' lives.
Absolutely.
And at the same time, it could change one of our younger students' lives when they come back to be with us. So I hope people will take it seriously.
Yep, absolutely. And I would just encourage, as we start with our May '22 graduates, 2022 graduates, that we make sure those that are coming back to us as scholar teachers, that we really celebrate them. So we'll make sure that at the board meeting, we lean in and denote what school they're at and make sure that we check on them and make sure they're having a positive experience. All right, I'll keep going. My Future NC, there is a hyperlink there and I printed you out a copy. It's a light blue copy, two pages. I wanted you to see that and have that information. But My Future NC, later on in our board books, I will suggest a resolution. But they are an organization that really is supporting students getting registered for FAFSA and being a part of college attainment. And we know that in Edgecombe, that's our goal, is that we want every student to have admission into college and this board is supportive of that. I've been named to the advisory board, so I'm excited about that as well. But their goals and mission aligns to those of Edgecombe and so I'm excited about that. But again, you have a two-pager and they do a two-pager. They do an information sheet for every county in the state and it just gives us our data. And so, you have access to that. And if the copy is not kind of what you want, if you want an electronic version, there is an online version that you can pull and have a copy for yourself. The next is TNTP and it's K2 Learning Partnerships. You see some pictures there. And so, this is our Parent Education Academy. It's for kindergarten through second grade. And our MCLs were just doing some extended work with some of our students. It notes here MMA, Princeville Carver, and Coke Wimberly, that they are meeting regularly and they're planning and developing resources for parents. So this is a way for us to connect with our parents, help our parents, to help our scholars, to kind of dig a little deeper and be able to support them when they come home and they're doing assignments there. So again, Paula shared this information with us and I wanted to be able to share this with you. The pictures noted there are from Princeville and that's, again, a way for us to help our parents with their children. The last sheet is about the mask mandate. And just keep in mind, each month we come back, we ask the board to vote on the mask mandate and that will be in Section 8.5B. And there, we can have some conversation if needed. I will note that when we went to the county commissioners' meeting last week, our district is still in the red. And so, we just want to be careful. We know that we'll be getting out soon for holiday break and we'll come back. We'll certainly keep up with our numbers and see where we are. But as a district, we are in the red. If you look further down, the COVID dashboard is kept up to date. Every Friday, there's an update. And this is our information from December 10th. And those are our numbers. Any questions regarding anything that I've shared?
Anybody?
Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Williams.
Thank you.
6.2, maintenance updates, Mr. Williams.
Good evening, Mr. Board Chair, Madam Vice Chair, Superintendent Dr. Bridges, fellow board members. Coming before you this evening with a few of our maintenance updates. The first one is when we moved from 8.5 from item for action to item for information. We had a boiler at South Middle that we had severe leaks inside of. So we had to do an emergency repair. The repair was $26,341, but we had to do it just to keep the heat in the building. There was only one company that we could get gas getting from without a 12-week delay. So I got with Dr. Bridges, talked to her, explained it to her, and we ended up just doing an emergency procurement on that one. So that's why that bill is $26,000, but we did not receive any other bids on it. So we do have heat in the South Middle School. We're working on getting the gym squared away. As you know, the pipes, the steam pipes that lead to that gym have multiple leaks inside of it. But the issue is, we have asbestos wrapping or insulation around it. So we're working with SPC and Eastern Environmental out of Rocky Mount to get that asbestos-positive insulation removed so that SPC can come in and repair those pipes. North Edgecombe, actually, the guys are working now from Allred Mechanical to replace that hot water pump that's going to serve, I think it's the H Hall. So they'll be there till probably about 9:00 tonight and try to get that system drained and working up before tomorrow morning. So I know a few people have received phone calls about North not having heat in certain parts. That pump finally came in, came in Friday, but they were not able to get to it till today. They would have finished earlier, but by the head of that explosion, an actual fan flew off in the hospital, so they had to leave us and go get that back up and running. So we certainly understand that, not that our kids are less important, but we understand why they did what they did. Phillips Middle, the boiler is being finished up. We had the two propane tanks delivered today. Allred's going to pipe that in tomorrow. So hopefully by Wednesday, if everything goes well, we'll have that building back up with a new boiler and heating inside of that building. Carrier for West Edgecombe Media Center, we're still waiting on those units. It's air conditioning, so we're good with the heat on this side. And Tarver High, these are the parts we have on order. Their camera system, we're expecting that sometime the first or second week of January. The burner assembly for Stock's boiler, we're expecting that to be here the second week of January. And Martin Middle's intercom. Part of that happened with the intercom because of the power surge. We actually had to spend about $6,000 on one breaker. So I know some of you have received phone calls about the power being out. There was a power surge over the weekend. When we came back last Monday, there was lights on in half the building and part wasn't. So we called the town, town came out. There were some fuses that had blown on the power pole right outside of the school. Once they changed them out, turned the power back on, now we have power in the half that we didn't have and then the power that we did have, it went out. So it was an actual break. When the power surge came in, it blew the breaker. And so, we had it shipped out. We had to go to, well, we didn't go to Greensboro. We had it shipped from Greensboro overnight to get it to us. So now, everything's back on, but we've got it. It fried our intercom system. So part of the K2 wing is going to have to be replaced, that board and the intercom system. So that part is on order. As soon as it gets in, NC's suddenly installing it. All right, so there's the breaker. But these are some of the things that damaged. It damaged part of the fire alarm system, the rooftop air handler. That's why we didn't have heat because we didn't have power. Couldn't get power through that breaker. And it also caused, I don't know how, but it ended up causing a steam leak in the 200 Hall. So we got that corrected. Allred came out, fixed that for us. We're going to have to take a hard look this coming summer on the piping inside of that building. Every winter, it's starting to find, whatever we replace, it moves down. Find the next weakest spot. So that's going to be a big-ticket item we're going to have to look at. We're certainly going to try to do what we can to keep the building running this winter. But this coming summer, we're going to have to look at replacing a lot of that old piping inside of that building. The new piping is holding up. It's just finding the weak spots as it goes along. It started off at the cafeteria, that rear entrance where you come in. It used to be the stairwell. Started there, right at the cafeteria. Now it's working its way down that hallway and now it's going up to the second floor. So it's just finding the weak spots. South Middle, something similar with the steam pipes. We just talked about it. It did cause the fire alarm to go off. I do not want to turn that fire alarm off because in the instance, we do have an emergency. We can put it into test mode where it will not call out, but if you're not anywhere close by, you will not hear it. So I think we'll be better off to leave the fire alarm on and just come out and make sure nothing's wrong than to turn it off and then we do have an incident in the building. That is also contributing to the heat loss in the gym. Mr. Ellis asked me about that earlier. We are working on trying to get that corrected so that we can at least have some heat in there until we can get all these pavers removed and get the piping repaired. Here's the boiler at Phillips. It's a more energy-efficient boiler. It's a little bit smaller, but it's stronger than the ones that we have currently in our building. So it is in the building. It is piped in. It has passed inspection. Now we just got to pass the inspection of the pressure test and hooking up the gas lines. The two tanks have been dropped right outside. The two tanks have been dropped right outside. These are temporary tanks. We're going to use these through the winter. Once March gets here, we'll send these back and we'll put the new bigger tank, similar to what we have at Carver, here. We could not get one fast enough. It was going to be like a six-month wait list on that to get it shipped. So these two tanks are two one-thousand gallon tanks. It'll suffice the building, and we will be able to have heat hopefully by the end, by Wednesday morning, no later than Wednesday night in this building. South Middle, we started changing out the air conditioning units in the enhancement building. The heat is working in that part, so while it's in the heat, uh, heating season, we're taking all the old air conditioners off and having those swapped out while we're in heating season. So we replaced them with the train units. All of these come with ten-year warranty, two years on the labor. So we don't have to do anything to them for two years. After that, it's just preventive maintenance on keeping them. Coker Wembley, the three hundred wing, which is the last wing that was built on, we have changed out every one of those units in that building. So now they have, sir? Oh, yeah, we've changed out twelve units. So that, that three hundred wing, if we lose the boiler, we still have heat down that three hundred hall. They also have their own individual air conditioning units. So now, if anything goes down, whether it's air or heat, those classrooms in that hallway, those twelve classrooms will function on their own. We're working on the two hundred wing. We're waiting on parts to come, not parts, but the actual units to come in. And that'll give us those two wings with, with fully functioning heat and air that operates independent of a boiler or a chip.
Mr. Williams, before we go to the next slide, that, that did strike a nerve with me. So we're getting to the point now that the wing at Coker Wembley and we did something at Southwest and someplace else during, at that same time. So now all of these things are beginning to, the warranties are off, and they're beginning to kind of break down?
What do you mean?
We, we, we did all of, when we did the last, that wing at Coker.
Are you talking about the old units?
Yeah.
Yes, sir.
Right.
Yes, sir. They're actually.
These are coming at the same time.
Yes, sir. They're all starting.
How many warranties did we have on them? Uh, it's happened twenty years, I know.
No, it wasn't twenty years. From what I've seen, they were all like five to seven year. The extended warranties were never picked up. So I understand in the cost of trying to save money, that may have been the reason. I, I can't speak for, you know, my predecessors or anybody before me. But that's the only thing I can think of of why you wouldn't pick up the extended warranty. Just like with our chillers and things that we're replacing now, we're building in the ten to fifteen-year warranty because it takes a lot of the load off of us. So it's basically like we got the basic warranty, and now that they're going out, none of these parts have been changed out or serviced. And that's why, that's why this all is going out at the same time.
And I noticed that. We had about three projects at that time. Coker and Southwest and Phillips, all of them in the same, well, the bomb bedroom, I think.
Yes, the last bomb.
It looks like they're all crashing.
At the same time. Yes, sir. So yeah, so we're picking up the extended warranties on everything. It's building to the actual pricing, so that we are not on the hook when these large pieces or a lot of pieces of equipment go down at one time, it's still covered. At worst, we'll cover like maybe their labor, but the parts of these equipment will still be under warranty. Yes.
And I'm sure you've gotten all of the calls that we have gotten about Phillips Gym and all of the other things and how these parts were up and on. Did I get it?
Yeah.
But I, I'm glad the boiler's there.
Yes, it's there. This boiler will solve all the problems at Phillips. That one boiler serves that whole building. And that's what we're trying to get away from, is like one piece of equipment serving a whole building. So now even still, even though the boiler's going to do the gym, we can still have class in this building with the individual units that we've put in. So the complaint is not the classrooms. There's fourteen classrooms that have heat and air inside of them. But the, the larger spaces, like the cafeteria, the multipurpose room, the gym, we're not able to get anything temporary inside of those. All right, Southwest Edgecombe Welding Lab. So this is the new project for CTE. The two units came in last week. We were able to get them in and get them installed. So they'll be up and functioning. We have a rep coming in Wednesday who's going to fire them up, show us how to take care of them, show us how to use them. These have a five-year warranty on them. So for five years, we don't have to touch these. So this is part of the new welding lab that they're going to put in. We took the ceiling, we're going to take that ceiling all the way out, just make it one big, large, open space, paint the room and redo the floor to try to, you know, spruce it up, make it look like an attractive space. But we've got them in. All the welding equipment has come. I met with Mr. Warren Lynch today, who was the welding instructor over at ECC. And we shared a few ideas. And so we're going to work over Christmas break to try to spruce this space up and make it like an appealing, attractive space for kids to want to sign up and learn. From what I'm understanding, it's already, on the class is full. I think they extended it to eighteen kids, and it's already full. So we're looking at purchasing four more of these for the spring. And then by the time summer's here, the, the equipment will be here, and we can be able to service six booths instead of two. All right, so here's what we have under contract currently with Esser Funds. We're at three point two million. Of course, we got North Edgecombe, Carver. The newer ones, I'll go with those, West Middle School AC. For us to take all nine units off that building is two hundred and fifty-nine thousand. SPC, I believe, has that contract. Carver and South, South Edgecombe is a hundred and eight thousand. SPC has that one as well. Tarver High School Electrical, we talked about it last year. That switchgear will not handle the new air conditioning systems that we're upgrading this building to. So we're going to have to change that out. So JL Brit out of Fayetteville, I believe, won that one. That one's four hundred and fifty-five thousand dollars. So we're killing two birds with one stone. We're actually upgrading the electrical inside of that building, and we're able to add more air conditioning to the spaces such as the cafeteria, locker rooms, and part of the back building. Those spaces, a lot of those spaces now do not have any functioning air. So with us upgrading this, we're going to be able to take care of that as well. Also, when you ride by Tarver High, if you look on top of the cafeteria, you see a lot of older air handlers that are rusted out. We're going to get those changed out. I think Comfort Systems has that one. Three hundred and forty-seven thousand, four hundred and seventy-nine, four hundred and seventy-nine dollars for those four units on top of that building. Any questions? That's all of ours.
Can I get an update? I'm not going to ask you for this tonight. There is a, but that's not fair. There is, there is a washing machine issue at Carver and has been for two months in the EC classroom. Teacher assistants have been taking the kids' clothes home nightly to wash them. We were down a teacher and an assistant, and now the assistant there is taking clothes home every night, washing them. I don't, I don't know why it's taken two months to get them. They could be backordered. I'm not putting you on the spot, but they need some relief.
Okay. Honestly, we, I, this is the first I heard of having to replace a washer in the EC classroom, but we'll get it. It's not easy.
They, they said they sent somebody over, but it was somebody came over like a heating and air conditioning person to look at or something. It wasn't even a repairman for like plumbing or anything. Thank you.
No problem.
Anybody else have some questions, comments?
I just don't know what we'll do if we didn't have those funds that we're getting.
That's true.
So something good did come out of the COVID.
I just, I can't imagine getting this done about those funds. I'm real good.
And again, we can't say it enough, like you and your guys.
Oh, thank you.
And some girls over there, too.
There is. All right.
Thank you. All right, three, six, three, mid-year graduation, Dr. Bass.
Good evening, Board Chair, Madam Vice Chair, members of the board, Superintendent Bridges. I stand before you tonight to share a list of twelfth-grade students who are now eligible to graduate mid-year. A lot of those students may be twenty-two credit, on the twenty-two credit diploma track, or have spent four point five years in school. The counselors have reviewed their transcripts and signed off on the applications, so have their parents. The principals of each individual school have also reviewed their transcripts, and they all came to me and I reviewed their transcripts. So they all have met or will meet at the end of the semester, which is this Friday. If they pass all of their courses, they will meet all the requirements for North Carolina graduation. And as in years past, even though they graduate mid-year, they won't get their physical diploma until May, like every, or June, like everybody else. They still will have the opportunity to participate in some events like prom, if we have it, and other senior graduation activities. They still have the opportunity to participate in those. Any questions?
Dr. Bass, and, and you can do this later, now, later on. Do we have many of these? And we have right many every year, early graduates. Do many of these go on and start a, a early semester at a higher education school somewhere?
Yes, sir. We actually have either the Vow or the Sal at Southwest is on that list. And they will be starting school in January, post-secondary. Yes, sir.
Any questions? Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Six four fundraiser, Dr. Bridges.
So if you take a quick look in your book, you do see a fundraiser for Southwest. This was in between meetings. It was a GoFundMe to request donations for supplies November fifteenth through the twenty-ninth. I mean, fif- yeah, fifteenth through the twenty-ninth. Any questions for going into fundraiser?
Question?
Six five, we have some field trips. And most of these field trips are for band activities. You see the schools listed, you see the dates. And you also see Tarver High School listed here for their football game. And of course, we won once again. Tarver High School was victorious. But again, you see the field trips there. Any questions or concerns?
Questions, anyone? All right, six, six, Special Olympics, spring games. So that's why our fearless leaders coming over out of the.
Yes, sir.
Across the field over there.
Yes, sir.
Good evening, Board Chair, Vice Chair, other members of the board, and Superintendent Dr. Bridges. Myself and Mr. Thomas Perkins, who is the local coordinator for Edgecombe County, which involves parks and RIC, is here tonight. Since about two thousand nineteen, we have been working on officially becoming members of the Special Olympics again. And so it's been a process. Last year, we officially became members of the Special Olympics again. I think it's been over ten years. And we were one of the last counties in North Carolina, in eastern North Carolina, to become members of the Special Olympics. And so we didn't get to have our spring games that we prepared for last year. And so we just wanted to come before you to just say we are crossing our fingers in hopes to have it this year, as long as we have the go-from Special Olympics. And if we stay out of the red, we think that we will host that. And so that will be on April the twenty-ninth and a rain date of May the sixth. You want to share anything else?
None, other than we're just trying to get it back. It's a lot of work to get accredited. I've got to do the budget, do everything. Megan has been important. It's a collaboration between the town, the Edgecombe County Public Schools, Edgecombe County, and the school system. So just trying to get everything up and running, and appreciate all the help that you guys do and what Megan does as well.
And Mr. Perret has been a, a huge part in the meetings that we have, as, as well as his wife. And so we'd like to thank y'all for all the help that y'all helped us with as well.
But on behalf of the board and the entire system, Mr. Perkins, I want to thank the town of Tarver and the RIC department, because they, they did, they gave us a, a half a position so that you could work with us on getting Special Olympics recertified and all. That's a lot of work and a lot of fan hours, and they gave us that position. So we want to thank the town of Tarver.
Thank you. I'll, I'll pass it along. Thank you.
That's it.
Other questions?
Any questions?
Great, thank you. Thank you.
They've been meeting and working on. Okay, six, seven, Technology and Media.
Greetings, Board Chair, Madam Vice Chair, board members, Superintendent Under Bridges. Tonight, I'm going to present to you some information on the Children's Internet Protection Act, or SIPA. So basically, what is SIPA? SIPA is a federal law passed by Congress in two thousand, and it covers concerns about children's access to the internet and things that may be on the internet. SIPA is also part of E-Rate, so our district has to be compliant with the SIPA law in order to receive these federal funds during each cycle. So SIPA requires some things from our district. And number one is that we must have an internet safety policy, which we do in our board policies, and that we must have technology in place to protect or filter what the children can access while they're at school, while they're at home using our devices or our accounts. SIPA also requires that we have some type of monitoring in place, that we can monitor online activities for minors. And lastly, SIPA requires that we educate children on how to use the internet appropriately and to prevent cyberbullying and to protect their digital footprint or the things they do online, tracking them throughout their years. So I'd like to announce that ECPS is SIPA compliant. We have met all these requirements this year. We do have Zscaler, which is our filtering in place. It's provided by the state. It does filter content while students are at school. It does filter content while students are at home with our devices, since we are one-to-one. And again, while students are using their ECPS accounts, Zscaler is in place. We are also compliant because we do monitor our students' internet usage, including their websites visited and their communication. We also have started using Bark in our district, which sends admins or their designees announcements or warnings when students have violated our policies or to warn them that action may need to be taken. So it's preventative. And finally, we are compliant because at the beginning of each school year, we do provide internet safety and anti-bullying lessons. This is the first ten days of school, and the students sign off, and the teachers sign off, and the admins sign off that SIPA has been completed at their school. But this year, we decided to go one step further and implement a monthly focus on digital safety. So every month this year, we have a special focus. We have contests for the students. This is grades K through twelve, thirteen, for them to complete and win prizes. And so this is something we're going to carry through year after year. So SIPA or internet safety is never a one-time-of-the-year thing. It's a every day, every month thing. Any questions?
We thank you.
Thank you.
No committee reports, eight, A, eight, one, A fundraisers.
Okay. Then we have six point eight, Rose, six point eight, what's that? Mr. Williams?
That, um, that was the boiler.
That was the boiler.
Oh, he took care of that. Okay, all right. Okay, eight point one, A. You see WA Patilla Middle School fundraiser. The dates are listed there, January fourth through the eighteenth. Gives you a range of what the cost is for items for sale that are there. Any questions?
Any questions or comments? And we'll hear a motion.
Evelyn Wilson, on for motion that we will approve the WA Patilla Middle School fundraiser.
It has been motioned second that the, uh, concern item or the fundraiser be approved. You've heard that motion second in further discussion?
Margaret.
Hearing none, those in favor, let it be known by stating your name, saying aye.
Evelyn Wilson, aye.
Ms. Scott, aye.
Way Melis, aye.
Auntie, aye.
Billy Warsley, aye.
And that motion carried. Thank you. Eight one B, eight one D.
So this is approval of the appointment of Ms. June Cherry to the ECC Board of Trustees. You see the item for action. It's requesting the board approval of this appointment that will greet, uh, take the place of Dr. Chad Caton in light of his resignation, which will begin, she, we would begin on January one, ending June thirty, two thousand twenty-three. And at the end of the recommendation behind that sheet, you see a letter from Reverend Jerry Spool, from the Board of Trustees, sharing affirmation about Ms. Cherry. Let's see if there are any questions or concern. I saw Dr. McLeod here, as well as Ms. Cherry, if they want to come forward for comments. Thank you.
Good evening, everyone. It's great to see you all. Thank you for an opportunity to speak before you to our Board Chair, to our Madam Vice Chair, to the members of the board, and to Dr. Bridges, who's been my superintendent of the year since I run, two thousand and eighteen. To all the employees, I bring you greetings from your friends at Edgecombe Community College. So I stand here in support. you greetings from your friends at Edgecombe Community College. Uh, so I stand here in support for, uh, Mrs. June Cherry in consideration for, uh, filling, uh, as Dr. Bridges mentioned, a vacancy, uh, that was, uh, vacant, uh, vacated by Dr. Chad Caton, uh, due to his work obligations. He could no longer fulfill those duties. So I'll, uh, ask for your consideration. But Mrs. Cherry, I won't still hurt thunder. She has a prepared statement to share with you.
Sure.
Thank you.
Uh, good evening, Board Chair, uh, Madam Vice Chair, uh, and Superintendent Dr. Bridges, and the other Board members. My name is June Cherry, and I am here seeking for this Board to approve, uh, and appoint me to the Edgecombe Community College Board of Trustees, uh, to fulfill Dr. Caton's remainder, um, of his, uh, term. I am sixty-three years old, and I am a native of Tarver. I am a retired registered dental hygienist and had worked in the healthcare settings for nearly thirty-nine years here locally. Uh, I married to Lance Cherry Senior for forty years. We are lifelong active members of Howard Memorial Presbyterian Church here in Tarver, and we have both served as elders on the session, and I personally have served as clerk of session for the, uh, three years. My husband and I have two grown children, Lance Cherry Junior, he is thirty-five years old. He is married. He has a two-year-old granddaughter, pretty much. And we also have, uh, a daughter, Brittany Cherry West. She is thirty, and she is also married, and, uh, she has a two-year-old granddaughter as well, and she is also an educator. So I do have a personal interest in education myself. I like to see young people thrive. I'm always interested in what they're doing. When I was practicing dental hygiene, I would always ask young people who would sit in my chair, well, what are your plans when you, uh, are going to graduate from high school? When I would always encourage, uh, starting at Edgecombe Community College or another institution of higher learning. Um, it's always, education has always been an important aspect of our family's lives. Um, I graduated from Tarver Edgecombe Academy in nineteen seventy-seven, where I was salutatorian of my class. And then I went on to the University of North Carolina at Chapel Hill, and I graduated in nineteen eighty with my Bachelor of Science degree in dental hygiene. Lance, my husband, graduated, uh, from Tarver High in nineteen seventy-seven. He went on to East Carolina University and graduated in nineteen eighty with a Bachelor of Science degree in Business Administration, and went on and got another degree, uh, in nineteen eighty-one, a Bachelor of Science degree in Industrial Engineering. Our son, Lance Cherry Junior, graduated from Tarver High in two thousand and five, and he was a member of the Tarver High Football Team. The Monty Vikings, we're so proud of them. Congratulations. And, uh, he, um, played football under Coach Craddock. Um, he was a young coach at that time. And I have to say, watching the Tarver High Football Team and the Vikings play all these years, it's just been really thrilling for me. Um, I didn't have any brothers, so, you know, I just enjoyed football. Um, our son was also an Eagle Scout, and, um, while he was at, um, Tarver High, he was enrolled in the dual enrollment program, um, where you go to classes at Tarver High and then on to Edgecombe Community College. I thought that was very, very important, uh, for our small community. And he took thirteen credit hours with him to NC State. He graduated in, from NC State in two thousand and nine. He went on to East Carolina University, and he graduated with a Master's Degree in Business Administration in two thousand and sixteen. Our daughter, Brittany Cherry West, graduated from school in Nash County in two thousand and nine, and then she went, uh, entered East Carolina University, uh, graduating with a Bachelor's Degree in Elementary Education. She left North Carolina, unfortunately, for a teaching position in Virginia, uh, where she, uh, married a fellow from Yorktown, Virginia. And, um, she then went on to the College of William and Mary in Williamsburg, Virginia, graduating with a Master's Degree in Education Administration in two thousand and eighteen. She is now an Assistant Principal at Yorktown Elementary School in York County. Education is important in my family. Um, I just want to also mention, this is a school where I just had a personal interest in this. President Biden and his wife, Dr. Jill Biden, visited this particular school, uh, to observe model classrooms for in-person learning. This was during the pandemic. Um, at this time, my daughter is also a candidate for her educational doctoral degree in leadership attending Liberty University in Virginia. Um, for, for me personally, I think education is important for engine, individuals to succeed in life. Edgecombe Community College is a great place to start, whether for a certificate, an associate's degree, college transfer, or other types of training. Uh, my hu- husband and I own businesses both in Edgecombe and Nash Counties. Our community needs an educated workforce. We need to learn valuable skills, uh, and the college currently offers many opportunities for these people in our community. I would like to serve Edgecombe Community College as a trustee and offer support to Dr. McLeod, his staff, the foundation, and the students who attend this school, and communicate a vision to a broader community. My personal, uh, statement is a good education is one of the greatest gifts a person can strive to achieve. You have any questions?
Any questions? Just one comment. We'd love to have your daughter come back over this way.
I would too. Um, I, I, we pray every day, um, that she will come back. We do. Yes, we do. And, um, maybe that'll happen one day when she needs more help with grandchild. So.
Any questions or comments? Anybody hearing none? We hear a motion to, uh, accept, uh, Mrs. June Cherry as the, then at the turn of Dr. Caton at Edgecombe County, uh, South City Public School, uh, uh, Edgecombe Quimby to College.
Evelyn Wilson, I offer motion that we approve Mrs. June Cherry to serve on the ECC Board of Trustees.
Second.
Okay. You've heard the motion at second for the approval of Ms. June Cherry, the ECC Board of Trustees. You've heard that motion at second and further discussion. Hearing none, those in favor, let it be known by stating your name, saying aye.
Evelyn Wilson, aye.
Martha Scott, aye.
William Ellis, aye.
Ann Kent, aye.
Billy Worsley, aye.
And that motion passed unanimously. Congratulations.
Thank you very much. And I, I will do everything I can to, um, support this community and the Board Trustees and the Board Education here at Edgecombe County.
Thank you.
And get my daughter back. Thank you very much.
We appreciate it. Thank you all for coming, Dr. McLeod.
Absolutely, and I look forward to seeing you all Wednesday night.
That's right, absolutely.
Thank you. Thank you. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Eight point two B, approval of the audit report.
We have, um, either Laura Leary or Nicole Saba.
Someone different.
Oh, not Nicole. Well, hi, good to see you again.
Good to see you. Yeah, she, she's definitely prayer and smarter, so y'all might have gotten short end of this too. Well, good evening, Board Chair, Madam Vice Chair, and, uh, Superintendent.
Thank you.
Congratulations. That's a big deal.
Uh, it is a big deal. Thank you so much.
If you'd be kind enough to turn in your presentation summary, um, on page one, the main reason you hire us as an audit firm is to issue an opinion on the financial statements as a whole. We did issue an unmodified report, which is quote-unquote clean report. There were no findings, which is awesome. Um, and the financials are good, which is double awesome. So on page one, there were no significant audit findings. Page two, no difficulties encountered in performing the audit, no uncorrected misstatements, no disagreements with management. Management did provide us with a representation letter dated November twenty-second. I'm unaware that management consulted any outside accounts, auditors, et cetera. And then again, no other findings or issues. It's a, it's a great report. Good job by everyone, um, from compliance to the financials. Staff was great with us during the audit. I do have a couple comments, uh, just so you're aware. In the past, the Local Government Commission, if there were a finding, et cetera, may have issued a quote-unquote unit letter. The LGC is, is not going to do that anymore. If there was an issue, they have some, uh, templates and other things online that we enter data in, and it kicks it out, and we have to present it here. You don't have any, so I don't have to present any. Thank goodness. The other thing is, from a, a future standpoint, there's, uh, on the, uh, page three, there's a, uh, comment about Gatsby eighty-seven. Uh, for the finance staff and all the department heads and everybody, it's going to be a wonderful time to accumulate all the leases that the, uh, system has, and you have to put them on the financial statements. It's a lot of work. It's, uh, it creates what I think, uh, could be a very challenging time in terms of accumulating all the data, reviewing it, to ensure that it's on next year's financials. If you were to talk to anybody at Local Government Commission, they would tell you, uh, it's a lot of work. And there's been a couple companies start up because it's a nationwide issue, and one of their whole things is to accumulate the data necessary for that. So just be, be aware, next year will be a lot of fun as you go through the year. Can't wait till the end of the year to accumulate it. It's going to be a, uh, should be starting now to accumulate that data. On page four, I don't say this is all the key numbers in the audit report, but it's definitely some of them. And to put it in context or to show trends, we, we, um, put this year's numbers in the first column there, and in the four prior year audits to your right, you can see total fund balance in your general fund is three million forty-five thousand. That's the highest of any of the five years presented. Restricted fund balance is six hundred and twenty-five thousand. Assigned fund balance at three hundred and fifty thousand, unassigned at two million and seventy thousand. Total general fund expenditures is six million three oh seven. And then fund balance available as a percentage is thirty-eight point thirty-seven. It's the highest of any of the percentages there. And then unassigned fund balance at thirty-two point eight two percent. Revenues over and under expenses before transfers, the general fund, uh, was great, a million seven hundred and thirty-nine thousand. Capital outlay was a negative three eighty-three. Other restricted was nineteen thousand two seventy-one, and then child nutrition was a positive one million two forty-seven. Cash in the general fund was a positive two million eight hundred and sixty-six thousand. Again, it's highest of any of the five years. Other restricted funds a million three sixty-two, and child nutrition at two million ninety-eight thousand. Fund balance, again, in the general fund is three million forty-five thousand. Capital outlay is three hundred and eleven thousand. Other restricted is fifty-seven thousand five thirty-three, and then child nutrition net position is nine hundred and forty-three thousand. And you got a breakdown of your general fund revenues there, and then followed by a breakdown of your general fund expenditures. On the bottom, the bottom three numbers in the page show state public school fund, forty-three point eight million, federal grants at nine million seven hundred and fifty-four thousand, for the total of fifty-three million five fifty-seven. And again, that's the highest of any year shown on the report. On page five, you can see your total fund balance in blue, and your restricted in red. And clearly see where, uh, current year total fund balance in your general fund is the highest of any of the five years. Unassigned fund balance there at thirty-two point eight two, clearly very good. On page six, your revenues over and under expenses before transfers there. You see where general fund and child nutrition are positive, capital, capital outlay has slight dip. And on the bottom, you see child nutrition's net position coming back from what was an accounting pronouncement that caused it to dip. It wasn't a cash flow issue. And then page seven shows cash balances and fund balances with the numbers on the bottom of that page. Total cash balances at six million three twenty-seven, total fund balances at four million three hundred and fifty-eight thousand. And then page eight shows your total general fund revenue by department there, and general fund expenditure is the same way. And page nine shows your state public school fund allocation and the federal grant fund allocation. I, again, the main thing you ask us to do is issue an opinion on the financial statements. We issued a good report, and there were no findings either on compliance or on the financial statements. So you got a good report, and you got good numbers on top of it, just like the Superintendent. Really good. I am happy to answer any questions you've got of me.
I've been looking at these reports for a very, very long time. I'm almost, I don't want to tell you how long. This, this may be one of the better ones I've heard, um, that I've heard presented to our Board.
It is very good.
It's excellent.
Yes, ma'am.
No worries. Appreciate you. Great work.
Hearing none, and we hear a motion to accept the, uh, audit report.
Evelyn Wilson, I offer motion to approve the twenty-twenty-one audit for Edgecombe County.
Ann Kent, second.
You've heard the motion at second for the approval of the twenty-twenty, twenty-twenty-one audit report. For the county, heard that motion at second and further discussion or questions. Hearing none, those in favor, let it be known by the, uh, saying your name, saying aye.
Evelyn Wilson, aye.
Martha Scott, aye.
William Ellis, aye.
Ann Kent, aye.
Billy Worsley, aye.
And that motion passed unanimously. Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Thanks a lot. We appreciate it. Eight three B, approval of the resolution between My Future NC and ECPS.
Okay. Wonderful. Your Board Book, you said item for action. Um, the administration is requesting approval of the attached resolution as a supporter of My Future NC and the state's educational attainment goal. This resolution is a collaboration with My Future NC as they move their work forward to achieve post-to-secondary educational opportunities for high school students. When you look at the resolution, um, you see their kind of belief statements as well as embedded with ours. Um, and again, I think this lines up perfectly with the work that we do and what we believe about our students. Um, the work of My Future NC Commission is composed of an advisory board of commissioners who support work and provide real-world insight and expertise about the challenges of improvements to prosecondary attainment across the state. So I know that in Edgecombe, we're beginning to do, um, a little more work related to students as they leave us and what their next step is, and making sure that we stay connected to those students and supporting them. And I do think My Future NC can help us, um, come up with some, some, um, behind-the-scenes work of what that needs to look like and help us be successful. So I'm excited about the resolution, and I hope that you all, um, will approve this resolution tonight.
Questions or comments? I'm, I'm excited to see that it does, uh, wrap right around our, uh, mission and focus and college for all in those statements. I'm, I'm, I'm excited about that. Any questions or other comments? Hearing none, we need a motion.
William Ellis, I make a motion that we approve the resolution between My Future NC and Edgecombe County Public Schools.
Second.
You've heard the motion and second for the approval of the resolution between My Future NC and Edgecombe County Public Schools. Heard that motion at second and further discussion or questions. Hearing none, those in favor, let it be known by stating your name, saying aye.
Evelyn Wilson, aye.
Martha Scott, aye.
William Ellis, aye.
Ann Kent, aye.
Billy Worsley, aye.
And that motion carried. Thank you. Eight point four B.
Eight point four B. You all have seen this each month, as, as we have to bring this back before you, uh, but it's request for Board approval to uphold the mask mandate that all students, grade pre-K through thirteen, staff and visitors be required to wear masks in all group transportation, including buses, vans, drivers' education, cars, et cetera, on school grounds, and inside all ECPS facilities regardless of vaccination status. Um, we are currently, um, as I stated earlier, our district is still in the red. Um, we are hopeful. Um, we see the numbers that are part of the dashboard, um, that Susan and Matt Jordan have put together each week. Our numbers don't look bad, but we, again, are still in the red, and the recommendation is, um, to uphold the mask mandate at this time.
Any comments or questions?
Yes, um, I would like to mention this. I've had, um, some basketball coaches reach out to me, and this is a very, would be for a very small segment of our population. Um, and that is to have the mask mandate optional for the basketball players who are playing on the floor. It does not affect the, uh, players on the bench. They would still be required to wear their mask. The coaches would be required to wear their mask. The fans would be required to wear masks. It's just for the players that are on the floor at that time. Um, the surrounding counties, Pitt County, Wilson County, um, and Nash County, all allow their. The surrounding counties, Pitt County, Wilson County, and Nash County all allow their basketball players the option of whether or not they wear the mask or not. This puts our students at a disadvantage against some of these teams, and these gyms are very hot. The Tarboro gym in particular is very hot. And I think we need to consider very strongly allowing our students to have the same advantage that these other schools have. Again, we're talking about a very small segment of the population, just the players that are currently on the floor. When they come off the floor, they would have to put their masks back on. So I ask that we consider that.
Maybe amend the, amend the
Mandate.
The mandate for that. I've also received calls, and I support what Mr. Ellis has said. I, I think it's, I don't know how kids would play basketball with masks, though, as hot as it is in those gyms.
Any further comments or questions?
So I'll just say I, I understand, and, and what I'm hearing is, is just for basketball while on the floor playing, fans, coaches, other players would have their masks on, but our players while in the game, engaged in the game, would have their masks off. Yeah. And, and what I, I think
Well, they would have option, the option.
Option to have, right. They wouldn't have to.
If they want to continue wearing it, they have that option.
Sure, sure. Uh huh. And, and I think what we've done, and, and when we're in closed session and we're talking about particular, some of the athletic stuff that's part of closed session, we would, I'd like for us to make sure what we've done here is in alignment to the safe toolkit. And so if we, we want to stray from that, and that's certainly okay, but just for us, I appreciate you giving the clarity around fans, coaches, other players, and just as an option during the game while in play. Is that okay?
Anybody else?
Any questions, comments?
Any other comments? Hearing none, we need a motion.
We make a motion that we would do that
I was gonna say, don't we need, uh, I don't know what I'm saying. I think I'm saying, what's your amendment in this? Do we put that in?
And I think his, if his motion would include, if he wants to include that, that the amendment to the mandate motion that we have.
Or do, or do we need to, or do we need to
We need to ask her.
So the administration has made a recommendation that is the board's decision. So if there's a motion, if someone can make a motion to not adopt what the recommendation is, but to adopt something else. So if you don't need different motions or amend this, you just, someone needs to make a motion, and whether it passes or fails.
Got you. So what would happen to the other, uh, pre-K staff, all buses and everything, is what would happen to that?
Well, it, it sounds like for Mr. Ellis that he is, you know, depending on the motion, that the motion would be to uphold the ma- mask mandate for all of these except
Okay.
That would be his
Got you. Thank you.
Mr. Chair, William Ellis, I would like to make a motion that we uphold the mask mandates for students, grades pre-K, staff and visitors required to wear masks in group transportation, including buses, vans, drivers' ed cars, et cetera, on school grounds and inside all ECPS facilities regardless of vaccination status with the exception of the basketball players who are playing actively on the floor at the time will have the option of wearing masks or not.
Second.
It has been motioned and second that we approve the mask mandate as presented in eight point four with the exception of those basketball players who are presently playing on the floor who would have the option of whether or not to wear the mask. I get it?
Yes.
Heard that motion and second, and a further discussion or questions? Hearing none, those in favor, let it be known by stating your name, saying aye.
Evelyn Wilson, aye.
Marvin Scott, aye.
William Ellis, aye.
Ann Kent, aye.
Billy Worsley, aye.
You've heard that motion, and that motion passed unanimously. Thank you. And we're gonna, okay, good. All right, eight, six B.
So we'll ask Mr. Williams to come forward for eight, six B, eight, seven B, and eight, eight B regarding some maintenance contracts.
Good evening, Mr. Board Chairman, Vice Chair, Dr. Bruce, fellow board members. I come before you for approval of a owner contract agreement between the Edgecombe County Board of Education and Central Heating Air Conditioning for the renovation and replacement of air conditioning at West Edgecombe Middle School. This includes all six units around the building, the one unit in the six hundred building, and it also includes adding, adding air conditioning to the locker rooms and to the kitchen area in the amount of two hundred and fifty-nine thousand, four hundred and twenty-four dollars.
Any questions or comments? Hearing none, we need a motion.
Mr. Chair, William Ellis, I make a motion that we approve the contract between Edgecombe County Board of Education and Central Heating Air Conditioning to upgrade the HVAC at West Edgecombe Middle School in the amount of two hundred and fifty-nine thousand, four hundred and twenty-four dollars.
Billy Worsley, second.
Okay, Ms. Scott, that's second. Okay, we'll take, we'll take that's worthy. Worsley, I'm sorry. She's worth the worse. We are, you heard that motion and second, and a further discussion or questions? Hearing none, those in favor, let it be known by stating your name, saying aye.
Evelyn Wilson, aye.
Marvin Scott, aye.
William Ellis, aye.
Ann Kent, aye.
Billy Worsley, aye.
And that motion passed unanimously. Eight point seven B.
I come before you with another con- owner contractor agreement between the Board of Education and J.L. Britt Electric for the Tarboro High School electrical switch gear replacement in the amount of four hundred and fifty-five thousand dollars.
Any questions or comments on that? So it's finally here.
Yes, sir.
Okay. Hearing none, I need a motion.
Mr. Chair, William Ellis, I make a motion that we approve the contract between Edgecombe County Board of Education and J.L. Britt Electric Incorporated for the electrical switch gear replacement project at Tarboro High School in the amount of four hundred and fifty-five thousand dollars.
Second.
Motion and second, you've heard that motion and second for the approval of the owner contract agreement between ECPOE and J.L. Britt Electric Incorporated for Tarboro High School's electric switch gear replacement. Heard that motion and second, and a further discussion? Hearing none, those in favor, let it be known by stating your name, saying aye.
Evelyn Wilson, aye.
Marvin Scott, aye.
William Ellis, aye.
Ann Kent, aye.
Billy Worsley, aye.
And that motion passed unanimously. All right, eight point eight B.
Last but not least is our owner contractor agreement between the Edgecombe County Board of Education and SPC Mechanical for the HVAC upgrades at Carver Elementary and South Edgecombe Middle School. This does include all of the enhancement building out back at Carver, the back building, and this also includes the kindergarten building over at Carver and the first grade wing, replacing all those air conditioning units on that, on those buildings in the amount of a hundred and eight thousand, one hundred and thirty-one dollars.
Any questions or comments? Hearing none, I need a motion.
Mr. Chair, motion to approve the contract between Edgecombe County Board of Education and SPC Mechanicals for the split system HVAC project at GW Carver Elementary and South Edgecombe Middle School in the amount of one hundred thousand, one hundred and eight thousand, one hundred and thirty-one dollars.
Second.
Billy Worsley, second.
Okay, second by, yeah, board members. Kent, you've heard that motion and second, and a further discussion or questions? Hearing none, those in favor, let it be known by stating your name, saying aye.
Evelyn Wilson, aye.
Marvin Scott, aye.
William Ellis, aye.
Ann Kent, aye.
Billy Worsley, aye.
And that motion passed unanimously. Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
All right, thank you. All right, we move now to closed session here. Ms. Kent, one number, Kent, will you take us into closed session, please?
Yes, sir. I make a motion under the North Carolina Open Meetings Law, Section one forty-three, three, eighteen, eleven, A one, A three, and A six, to go into closed session, to consider personnel matters, to consult with the attorney, to preserve attorney-client privileged information, and to prevent the disclosure of student records rendered confidential under the Family Educational Rights and Privacy Act twenty U.S.C. twelve thirty-two G, and the disclosure of personnel records rendered confidential under G.S. eleven five, one fifteen C, three nineteen through three twenty-one.
Second.
Motion and second for the, for us to go into closed session under the Open Meetings Law, Meetings Law. Heard that motion and second, and a further discussion? Hearing none, those in favor, let it be known by stating your name, saying aye.
Evelyn Wilson, aye.
Marvin Scott, aye.
William Ellis, aye.
Ann Kent, aye.
Billy Worsley, aye.
And that motion passed unanimously. That was taken by Mr. Chair.
State of your name saying aye.
Evelyn Wilson, aye.
Marvin Scott, aye.
William Ellis, aye.
Ann Kent, aye.
Billy Worsley, aye.
And that motion carried unanimously, ten point one point two extracurricular activities attended them. Motion.
Mr. Chair, I make a motion that we approve the extracurricular activities for winter sports.
Second.
You've heard the motion as second for the approval of extracurricular activities for winter sports. Hear that motion as second and further discussion. Hearing none those in favor, let it be known by stating your name saying aye.
Evelyn Wilson, aye.
Marvin Scott, aye.
William Ellis, aye.
Ann Kent, aye.
Billy Worsley, aye.
And that motion carried unanimously.
Eleven board correspondents. I hold in my hand a letter from board member Ann Kent. Dear friends, thank you so much for the lovely dish garden that you sent me after my knee replacement. The festive four colors helped brighten my spirits. I am blessed to be on a board of such kind community leaders. I can call friends. Thank you again for thinking of me with calls and text messages and beautiful plans. Sincerely, Ann Kent. Alrighty. Thank you. Let me, and I did receive, I need to share that I did receive from North Carolina High School, that's not athletics association, school board association. Our gold belt award presented to the Edgecombe County Public School Board of Education for whole board training. We received that and acknowledged receipt of that. Dr. Wilson, I don't know, I didn't see your name in this ceremony thing that we had for your hours that you did last year. Cause mine weren't in there either, and I contacted them.
I'll have to talk to...
State of your name saying aye?
Evelyn Wilson, aye.
Marv Scott, aye.
Lee Melas, aye.
Ann Kent, aye.
Lily Worsley, aye.
And that motion carried unanimously, ten point one point two extracurricular activities attended. Motion.
Mr. Chair, make a motion that we approve the extracurricular activities for winter sports.
Second.
You've heard the motion as second for the approval of extracurricular activities for winter sports. Hearing that motion as second and further discussion, hearing none of those in favor, let it be known by stating your names here, aye.
Evelyn Wilson, aye.
Marv Scott, aye.
Lee Melas, aye.
Ann Kent, aye.
Lily Worsley, aye.
And that motion carried unanimously, the approval of the closed session minutes for November eighth, twenty twenty one. Regular closed session minutes.
Second.
You've heard that motion as second, for the approval of the closed session minutes for November eighth, twenty twenty one, regular business board meeting, you've heard that motion as second and further discussion, hearing none of those in favor, let it be known by stating your names here, aye.
Evelyn Wilson, aye.
Marv Scott, aye.
Lee Melas, aye.
Ann Kent, aye.
Lily Worsley, aye.
And that motion carried unanimously, eleven board correspondents, I hold in my hand a letter from board member Ann Kent, dear friends, thank you so much for the lovely dish garden that you sent me after my knee replacement, the festive four colors helped brighten my spirits, I am blessed to be on a board of such kind community leaders, I can call friends, thank you again for thinking of me with calls and text messages and beautiful plans, sincerely, Ann Kent. Alrighty.
Thank you.
Thank you. Let me, and I did receive, I need to share that I did receive from North Carolina High School, that's not the Athletic Association, School Board Association, our gold belt award presented to the Edgecombe County Public School Board of Education for whole board training. We received that and acknowledged receipt of that. Dr. Wilson, I don't know, I didn't see your name in this ceremony thing that we had for your hours that you did last year.
Oh.
Cause mine weren't in there either, and I contacted them.
I'll have to talk to them.
Check on them if you will, okay. Alright, any other correspondence, Dr. B?
It was over two thousand three hundred, so they probably ran out of ink.
They didn't have my name, then they have your name on my.
They probably ran out of.
Then you're somebody else's name.
I'm not worried about it, it's all bad.
You, everybody else solicited except the two of us?
They ran out of ink.
And I know that I suffered through all of those. Okay, okay, alright, thank you. Thank you. Alright, here's another card, thank you, I appreciate that. I suffered through watching all of them. Alright, this is from the Edgecombe County Board of Ed, to the Edgecombe County Board of Education, thank you, and thank you to let you know how very much your thoughtfulness meant, the plant is beautiful, thank you Lily, all worsely. Ann, well it's red, they always have some money, none of this money in here, right?
I see.
Alright, you are so much special, Merry Christmas, Happy New Year, and God bless you all, for all the things you do and all the wonderful ways you do them, this comes with warm thanks and wishes for all the happiness, and you deserve this Christmas, Eddie, from Eddie, Eddie is the floating custodian, he's been to as many schools as I have. Let's see, is that it?
Maybe left the poinsettia.
Oh, he did, okay.
For the awards, so you can fight over it.
We can bring the poinsettia to the atrium on Wednesday.
Okay.
That will help brighten that. Okay, let's see, items, Dr. B?
I don't have any, I just had the one concern with the parent, and I'll get with Deb and we'll go from there.
Anybody else?
I just got real quick.
Okay.
Charlene, could I, we just did an update, I can't forget my coaches.
Sure. I actually. Have a meeting with Lori. Sure, I actually have a handout to share with you where Ms. Luria and I are doing some comparisons again with the supplement schedule in Nash County, as well as Wilson County, and so we're still continuing to crunch some numbers because what we would like to present to you is what we think the overall impact would be, once we transition to a different supplement schedule. One of the things that she has suggested is that in addition to looking at Nash and looking at Wilson, is that we consider a district more similar to ours as in size, such as Martin County.
No, good one. Yeah, don't do that one, no, absolutely not.
And that was for representation, you know, because again, I will be. 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 Regarding number crunches, yes ma'am, and so, Mr. Ellis, the hope and the goal is, but yeah, not the hope, is to get you something for review, before we go home for Christmas vacation, and that way you can start to process the information in time for the January board meeting, so, that's the conversation, not a problem.
So, Charlene, Eric, is it, what's the light blue?
Okay, great, thank you for asking that question, so when you look at the document, the column that shows Wilson is of course their supplement based on years of experience, and then when you look in the middle, it has Edgecombe, and so the blue between Wilson and Edgecombe is the difference, how much more they pay than we currently do. And then the same holds true for Edgecombe as compared to Nash, and you'll see the difference in the black.
Okay. And so, just for clarification, any increase in these numbers will come out of local?
That's correct.
Is that accurate?
Yes, all athletics, all athletic funding comes out of our local budget.
And so, when you all look at this, you're gonna take the number of coaches and A.D.s and all of that and figure out what would it be if, with the increase?
Yes, so we plan to look at our current, well, actually, we're looking at a few different years, and then again, we'll plug in the numbers based on the supplement schedule for now, and then look at the projected amount for us if we were parallel to.
And whatever number you come up with, that would need to come out of our local?
Yes.
Every year?
Yes.
Okay, I just want to make sure.
And it'll be a local trajectory because the years of experience.
Sure, right, okay, so a little creepy, okay, just so we're aware, yeah, and I, you know, again, agree with Mr. Ellis, we have to do something, because if we don't, you know, who will do this?
But just look at where we are in football right now.
That's right, that's right, yeah. Anywhere in the world, absolutely, right, yes, indeed. Alright, anything else that brings our attention?
When you did turn Dare County down.
We did, yeah, he did, he did, somebody gave him a blank check, told him write it.
Wow.
They did, that was Nash, it was Nash Rock Round.
Is that right?
Yep. Alright, if there's nothing else, I need a motion for.